Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions on a new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. De Silva.
Evelyn Slank, our 43rd and 50th place. 16M, the seven barrier gates, where are those going to be located?
Kyle, just jump in if I'm not going to get this wrong. One of the security recommendations from now Steve Giacchi was to include what they're calling vehicle restraints. Right? So those are those areas where you want to add some access perhaps to an emergency vehicle, but typically you don't want through traffic too. One of those areas, Kyle, you're going to have to jump in. One of those areas is at Ramapo Ridge, adjacent to the building. There's a planter that kind of sits in an area that could allow for an emergency vehicle to go in the back. Do you know where I'm at? We're going to remove that. I believe we're replacing one at the high school.
Correct.
Is the one at the high school we're replacing here in the back of our offices or the one by the field?
No, the one by going down by the football field.
By the athletic field.
By the athletic field.
Yeah, replacing the one that's already there. These are all, for clarification, because it doesn't say it here in case there's any confusion, these are all exterior gates. Nothing is interior.
Right, right.
Betsy Ross as well? Right in front of where that parking area is that leads down?
Yeah.
I don't believe, GW?
Yes.
Okay.
On the right side of the school and then going around.
I didn't have it all written down.
Now, are these going to be like automated where the, like, no, they're going to just be the same manual?
Same kind of thing, yes.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Right, thank you. They have a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Mrs. De Paul. Dr. Shone, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do, my life, good. Good evening, everyone. The report I have for this evening is just an update. One of the things that was asked by Mr. Wenderkowitz and also you, Ms. May, was external cameras for our buses. And Kyle and I have started researching what that looks like with the current company that we have now, who has the ability to put it on our buses and the cameras and what they do and what it looks like, whether it's a front, a back, and also a license plate reader. There's a third that goes in the back. So we're going to research that a little bit more. We should have an update shortly, but I did want to let you both know and the board that it was on our radar. I filled in the facilities committee at a meeting we had earlier, so we'll keep it on our radar and update you soon, but it hasn't fallen short.
And you've gotten into a report for me. Right now, we're looking to Chapezi to come through with possibly, possibly, a pilot program for our district. No guarantees, but we'll see what we come up with if the board agrees.
Right. One of the things that we need to keep in mind when we do this is that we currently have 11 buses in our district, and we have the opportunity to outfit those buses with whatever it is that we feel appropriate, and that could be external cameras. We cover 92 routes between three or four different bus companies, including the 11 buses that we have now. So our buses cover about 30 routes, which leaves about 62 routes with buses from other companies that we cannot mandate external cameras on. So the only thing we can control, right, is what it is that we do here. We can't control or mandate other companies to do the same. They are costly to do, so if you take like a company like Scholastic has over 200 buses in their fleet. For them to outfit their buses with external cameras would be very costly, and if we mandate that on a bid that we put out, then Scholastic can no longer bid on our routes and they take so many, and I'm using that as an example. So I just think it's important when we talk about this, we can only control what we can control with what it is that we own. Sound good? Thanks, Peter.
Thank you. Mr. Blaker.
Okay. Yes, just two items tonight. One, a very brief update on the steam edition. We had another progress meeting earlier today. Things are still going well as far as a outlook for the next couple of weeks. Next week is going to be a big week. They're taking advantage of the break. We're looking to do a possible cutover of some electrical for the building, move some more equipment into place, put some equipment on the roof that needs to go there. Windows are expected by the end of April, and everything else is progressing very well. The other item I have is just another budget presentation, which just one moment to get started.
Oh, you got it.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is the third presentation for the 1920 school budget. We have one more presentation that's going to be done at our May 1st meeting. That's going to be a summary and a review of the overall budget and the adoption of the budget for the 1920 school year. We've submitted everything, as I've said before, to the county offices for their review. We have gotten some initial feedback. They're still continuing their review, but so far it is progressing very well through that process. Tonight, I'm going to discuss a couple of different areas of the budget, one being benefits, personnel or staffing, and then operations, the different impact that they have on the budget. For employee benefits, it's a very significant piece of the budget. The bottom bullet point shows that for the 1920, it comprises approximately 15.8% of the total budget. When we speak about benefits, employee benefits, we're speaking about contractual benefits, also health prescription, dental benefits for employees, workers' compensation, social security pension payments from the board for PERS employees, as well as tuition reimbursement and payment for accumulate sick time. So many different things fall into the overall umbrella of employee benefits. With regards to personnel or staffing, that impact on the 1920 budget is $35,386,000 is allocated as salaries for the 1920 budget. This does not include the benefits piece that I spoke about on the prior slide. As far as the size, to give an idea, the scope of the staff here in Maua for the Board of Education, we have approximately 480 staff. Those staff are spread over three collective hiring units, the Maua Education Association, which is the unit for teachers, nurses, secretaries, maintenance and custodial, bus drivers, and nurses. The Maua Administrators Association, which has principals and assistant principals, and the Maua Supervisor Association for our supervisors. Any employees that don't fit in those categories I mentioned are either have independent contracts or are paraprofessionals. Regarding staffing, our approach each year is each year, staffing is thoroughly examined and budgeted to address the educational, curricular, enrollment needs in district, as well as all the instructional and support areas. For the 1920 school year, after looking at the impact of these different areas to the budget, we have a budget that proposes a .7 FTE decrease for next year, for the 1920 school year. Other operations, we have different areas of the budget that also address a couple of different areas. Instructional support, curriculum guidance, multimedia, professional development, they comprise approximately $3.3 million or 4.8% of the budget. School operations, approximately $2.3 million or 3.4%. District operations and technology, approximately 3.7%. Maintenance, custodial, and grounds is a larger piece of the operation budget, $6.3 million or 9.1%. Then we have transportation of 4.1, and then instructional non-salary, not including the salaries I spoke about on the prior slide, of a little bit under $3 million or 4.2%.
Kyle, the transportation number, that includes transportation for specialized students?
Yes, transportation for specialized students, transportation for and support for our own fleet of vehicles, gas, the, pardon?
Parochial.
Yes, parochial is separate as well. Any parochial or non-public students that we do blessing and transport, the last number that is in there that's important to note is aid and loo. So for any students that attended non-public school that we do not have blessing for and if they're eligible for aid and loo, that is also included in that dollar amount.
And the maintenance, custodial, ground plan, assuming it includes utilities?
It includes utilities, includes electrical, gas, sewer, water, and general upkeep of the buildings and grounds. Supplies, custodial, contract is in there as well, custodial services. That's probably one of the largest single pieces of that after utilities or before utilities is the custodial contract for our custodians.
That'll include the expansion of our STEM building, maintenance and custodial?
It would. In conversation with them, we've been keeping them up to date with the size of the building, with the timeline of the building. They anticipate it to be a minimal impact to custodial staff. They feel that they're very comfortable supporting much of it and being able to maintain the cleanliness of it with the support that we have. If we do have to add it, it would be included in there as well.
The instructional non-salaried, give us an example of what?
Instructional non-salaried would be supplies, textbooks, the lease for the upcoming one-to-one initiative, which is probably the largest piece of that budget. Also, any other instructional equipment, furniture, things like that, that would be instructional, that would be in the classroom for the students to use. And for an outlook for the next meetings, I said before, the May 1st will be the last presentation on the 1920 school budget. That's going to be the final adoption of the budget, as well as a summary of the previous three presentations, including tonight's. Do you have any further questions for the board? Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Mr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. I want to begin with item 17A on the board agenda, where we have an announcement of retirement. Ms. Stacy Azavido, she's been in several of our school buildings in a range of programs as an instructional paraprofessional, and she currently works at Ramapo Ridge Middle School. Not only is Stacy well-liked by staff and students, but she also approaches each assignment professionally and always thoroughly understands each student that she is working with so that she can support them appropriately. Stacy has worked and has been assigned specifically with students to provide them with a balance of support and directness, especially as it pertains to organizational skills, which has been beneficial to many of our middle schoolers. We wish Ms. Azavido nothing but the best in her retirement. Also, item 17BD introduces a clinical residency program that we will be entering with Ramapo College. It serves as a local partnership where it satisfies the New Jersey Department of Ed TPA, Teacher Performance Assessment Requirement, for all teachers in a teacher preparation program, where teachers in this capacity will serve as the teacher's assistant in their cooperating teacher's classroom during the fall and in the capacity, when needed, of a substitute teacher or substitute paraprofessional in the fall throughout their designated school building as needed to help improve our substitute salary across the district. Student teachers will then complete their student teaching placement in the spring semester, as they have always done.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, hopefully it's beneficial for everyone. As you can see on our board agenda, we have started hiring for the 1920 school year, so we're entering the peak of hiring season, which is also exciting. We will also have our staff highlights at our next board meeting, May 1st, where we will be recognizing Marcy Pestridge from Betsy Ross School, Christine Petrowski from George Washington, Ally Bauer from Lennep Meadows, Don Hayek from Joyce Kilmer, Rich Gordon from Ramapo Ridge, and coincidentally, Dan Gordon from Maua High School. So we're excited to see them and celebrate them at our next meeting. Enjoy spring break to our teachers and paras who are in the audience.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ooh, indeed.
Mr. John Pascal, principal of the Maua High School, is proud to announce that a member of the class of 2019 has been selected as a winner of a National Merit $205,000 scholarship. Andrew M. Heinz is the recipient of this honor. From approximately 1.6 million students who entered the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program, only about 1,600 were named semifinalists. They were designated on a state representative, representation, represen-tional basis, excuse me, in proportion to each state's percentage of the national total of graduating high school seniors. In order to advance in the competition and to be considered for a merit scholarship award, a semifinalist had to become a finalist by fulfilling several requirements that included submitting a detailed scholarship application and presenting a record of very high academic performance. All winners of about 7,500 National Merit Scholarships are being chosen through a group of approximately 15,000 distinguished finalists. So congratulations to Andrew on his wonderful achievement. That is all that I have this evening. Do you have any board community reports tonight?
For policy 16X, it's the second meeting and adoption of a bunch more of 2,000 series. Continue to plow ahead on those. We had another meeting yesterday, so keep an eye out for more fun to come.
Do your relations if you're done, I'm sorry. Our next meeting will be May 1st. What we're working on right now, thanks to Brett, is developing a tri-fold, which we will use to be handed out at our music night, family nights coming up, wherever we can, pass it out to our parents, explaining exactly what our mission and vision is with a Thunderbird Think Tank. Even with all the publicity we have, we have the feeling that many people, and in fact, staff members, are not quite aware of what exactly is going on over here. So it's our hope to develop this tri-fold and initially just hand out, physically hand out at the various meetings. You have a copy of it? It's your cue.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Gallo?
I have a report from both negotiations and finance and facilities. In negotiations since our last meeting, we've met twice with the MAA, once on April 1st and once on April 8th. We are continuing to make substantive progress on achieving a replacement contract for the current contract, and we have our next meeting scheduled for April 23rd. So as one of the members would say, we are continuing to trend up. Finance, we had another meeting with Dr. Shone and Kyle on developing a capital plan and reviewing some items that have come up as a result of Dr. Shone's completing a capital plan list for the district, and we will continue to meet on that subject for a number of months. More importantly, on an older project, we met with township officials, township engineer, township business administrator, chief, our new chief of police, Steve Giacchi, some members of his staff this morning on the JK Maua High School driveway traffic light in response to an engineer's report that the town had prepared by Boswell Engineering last February. They had proposed a number of alternatives to increase the safety of our traffic flow at that area. Their primary or ultimate recommendation was for a traffic light. And so sort of, just to give everybody a little timeline to refresh where we've been on this, February 2018, Boswell provided the township with a report, which they shared with us. In August of 2018, we met again with both Mike Kelly, then chief of police, Jim Battelli, some staff of here, and Gary Escalise, who's the traffic engineer for Boswell Engineering, to review sort of, you know, hey, you listed out a number of alternatives, but we basically, the primary path to mitigating the dangerous situation that exists in our driveway is to put a traffic light in. In September of 2019, Mike Kelly presented that recommendation to the town council and repeated that presentation again in November. At that time, the town council had essentially two primary concerns. One was a queuing issue with if we were to put a light in, how would the queuing on Ramapo Ridge affect traffic flow there? They also wanted to know what the effect of the current diversion is at the high school. And so we met this morning with the big group, and everyone in the group continues to support the advancement of the traffic light project as the number one solution to improving the safety of the JK and Maua High School driveway entrance and exitway. And I think as a next step, and so from a board perspective, you know, the finance facilities committee has been meeting on these with this group for some time, and this is really, it's important to know that this is a township project. We don't control the road. We don't, you know, the roadway is a township issue, so we can advocate, we can ask, we can get data for the township, but ultimately, it's going to be the township working in partnership with us to make this project happen. So right now, based on the output from this morning's meeting, Mike Kelly is going to bring the answers on the initial concerns of the council back to the council, and hopefully they will give it its due and fair consideration. So but just from our perspective, you know, the finance facilities committee would recommend to the board that a traffic light be the solution and that we partner with the town on the project. So it just sort of turned into, became similar to what we did last time on the cell tower, just if anybody had any serious questions or concerns or negative feelings about the traffic light, you know, this would be your opportunity to voice that.
On the traffic light, is that 24/7 or just during school hours?
It is a, the way that it's been described to us, it is a light with basically infinite levels of controls and sensing and cameras and manual control, automated control, timing control.
But there's been no discussion as to when it would be operational?
The recommendation would be during school hours, and then it would, we talked about the possibility of having it blink outside of school hours, but there were some concerns that came up with that from, you know, from the police department that we can, you know, we'll be talking about more, but there's, there are, there are a ton of options.
Yeah, and the traffic engineer is also going to do some further follow-up study on the traffic flow there.
I was concerned maybe.
And whatever we do, we can always change.
Over the weekend, there's no traffic lights working.
Right.
It's frustrating.
It will not be a red light, green light situation.
Right, it would, that would be the type of thing where basically it's on the weekend where there's no traffic, it would be green on Ridge Road, and then if, when the camera saw somebody come up to, you know, it might change. But there's, it's, it's actually a pretty cool system that they're proposing.
To that point, it's not a county roadway, it's a township roadway, so we will have all rights and reservations with the timing, like the whatever we want to do. Whatever the police and engineer and the principal as well, kind of, all the term of words best.
And they will also be able to accommodate sporting events and other things where at night, if we need to change it back from stable green or blinking to a functional light, we'll have that ability as well.
And I'd say as someone who's on his currently third year battling that exit, that exit every morning at 7:35 and a little after the beginning of high school, I would say it's definitely needed. We've tried with the closing of the barrier because of the steam building. It hasn't, hasn't gotten worse, hasn't gotten better, so it's just as bad as it was before. That's basically what I'm saying.
There's been three accidents since the beginning of the year with the diversion place.
Thankfully not.
Minor accidents.
But, you know, I, every morning, I just, you know, you look at it and you just, it's pretty amazing we haven't had one. Not even with students. I mean, that's, that's obviously our biggest concern, but I mean, even in the morning, the drop off with adults, I mean, we're all crazy. Everyone's trying to get to work, everyone's trying to get back to get the other kid to get onto the school, and it's just, it's.
I've had a few close calls.
Yeah. Mrs. Slank, are you going to take a bow?
I just want it fixed. It's the best thing to do.
And who would be responsible for changing it from green, all green? The police would be in charge of that?
It would, it would be programmed, sort of during, you know, during the school year, you know, whatever time period we decide before school and after school, then it would go into doing its thing if, if it ended up to be blinking. Again, there, you know, there were some concerns voiced about it blinking too, so there's, there's pros and cons, but it's, they said it, there would be cameras, right? The cameras, cameras would detect traffic. If there are none, it would be one way. When it saw traffic, another way, it would, it's a pretty smart system. Yeah, it's really.
This is a longstanding safety issue that hopefully will be resolved.
Sounds like the right fix.
We are hopeful.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I have a report from the liaison, the liaison to the MSF. I had a meeting the other day, had a meeting the other day, and they are in desperate need of volunteers. So if anyone in the audience would like to help them out, a few times a year, it would be fantastic. They could really use your help. There will be two positions that are opening. I know that Michelle De Silva and Brooke Gazel will be leaving their two positions. They'll still be involved with the MSF, but those positions will become available. They have the run coming up on May 5th, and they also could use some help with putting together packages and registration. May 19th, sorry, May 19th, sorry, May 19th. And then they have the National Junior Honor Society Tricky Tray on June 7th, and Casino Night will take place in October on the 24th. And so they've got a lot of great things going on along with the scholarships and everything else that they do, and they could just really use some help, so I'm putting that out there for everyone. Please check into their wonderful organization. They really, really support our schools. That is all that I have this evening. Do you have any board member remarks or additional comments on any non-agenda?
It's been a sad week for Maua. I think I speak for the board, I offer my condolences to the Copeland family, death of their father and his father-in-law, and also more, I shouldn't say more, I apologize for that, the death of Sandy Park. Sandy Park was a long-term employee of our district, a secretary of the high school, who knew every, every kid's name. She was at every sporting events, football, basketball, and really cared for the kids. And you can see that the way the internet just lit up when the news of her death became apparent. Even a celebrity like Chris Raggy, who is taking the time to come and make a comment about that, and Ben made also had an entry there. She was dearly loved by our family, and like Scott Van der Mark, she had blue in her blood. She really loved Maua High School and the kids there. They appreciate that. On a happier note, yesterday, Ms. Baron and Mr. Gallo and Ms. Zegon and I attended a conference in Princeton Junction, New Jersey. I had, I handed out a white sheet, lists the presenters that were there, and also a website to go to. I really, really appreciate if you will look at this website, it's excellent. I tried it today, it does work. I'm not going to say any more about it, I'm going to let the other three expound on how great it was, even the balloons and the feathers.
The balloons and the feathers. Yeah, it was really a wonderful conference, and we have a lot of contacts now that would be useful if we, if we need their services within our district, especially the gentleman, George Scott, who gave the presentation on traumatic loss collisions for youth. It was, it was very worthwhile, I think. I think we all got a lot out of it, and I would highly recommend, again, everyone to go to the website and look at the presentation.
And a couple of things, takeaways that I have were the things that we already have in place, things like Parent Academy, mindfulness program.
First steps ahead.
We have elements of things that these folks all talked about as tools to improve mental health climate in schools. And I just pointed out the last speaker, Colleen Martinez, she is now a professor at Ramapo College, and she is a play therapist.
Theraplay.
Theraplay and sunshine circles. But it was, you know, you hear these things like theraplay, sunshine circles, and you can be skeptical, but she, she linked the activities that we did very directly to positive mental health interventions that, they sound incredibly simple, but you can see how effective they could be with a student undergoing a stressful situation. So it was, it was a day well spent.
And I'm on the DCEA Professional Development Committee, and we're actually meeting in May to plan our speakers for next year for the, all the teachers in Berry County, and I am going to recommend that they consider having George Scott come to one of their meetings.
The first speaker too, Alicia Di Lorenzo, we've seen her twice now.
Yes.
She is a rock star. She's a fantastic presenter. She has, she's in Asbury Park, and she's made, her programs have made a tremendous difference on the well-being of the students in that district.
Yeah, I think the speakers from North Brunswick caught me, because he, they offered multiple tools for their teachers when dealing with disruptive children, and that's important. It's not, it's not just a case of saying to the kids, the office, speaking to them, sending them back, and of course, you continue, he or she can use the same way. That's a disservice to our children. They, the underlying causes should be, to be investigated and corrected. And the guy Scott was an excellent. And the guy Scott was an excellent speaker. I hope we never have to use him, but he is really, was really a great person.
I think the takeaway from that was, instead of what's the matter with that person, it's what happened to them? And you think of it that way, it changes your whole mindset.
And the superintendent from North Brunswick also spoke, and he talked about how to systematize this in a district. So it's a lot of little interventions throughout the district, but to create a continuum of intervention, if you will. And North Brunswick came to this from a perspective of a lot of bad things that happened, they had a few student suicides, they had staff deaths, and a lot of stuff converged on them at one time, and as a result, we really dug deep into this.
Thank you, and I thank the board members for attending as well.
And Lynn for driving.
And Lynn for driving, thank you very much. Okay, I have a motion, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to thank everyone who came out to the Parent Academy last week. It was very well-attended. Coach Rick Wolf, who was a speaker, was absolutely amazing. I want to thank Dr. DiTuro for helping coordinate it, just another amazing Parent Academy. So I know there's a couple more coming up during the school year. If you've not attended one, I highly suggest attending whatever's coming up in the future.
Thank you. I may have a motion to move on new business. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Ms. Conoco.
This is 16.
16A, no, 15, no.
It's a mistake.
Oh, sorry, 16A through BD, new business.
No minutes, Kyle?
Uh, no, not for this.
16A through BD. Does anyone have any questions, comments they'd like to make? I do want to thank the Baldi, Enriquez, and Migliaccio families for their generous donation of $500, and express our sincere appreciation for the time and effort in preparing the baseball field for 2019 season. And also thank Mr. Fremgan, is that the way you pronounce it?
Yes.
Fremgan of Fremgan Brothers Tree Service for the beautiful handcrafted signage that he donated. So thank him very much for that. Anyone else? Okay, to take both calls, please.
Mr. Wenderkowitz. The yes on all except for J, I will vote present. Ms. Zico.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except I will be abstaining on 16A, check number 094564.
Mr. Copland.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes. Hey, I have a motion to proceed on 17A through CC. Mr. Wenderkowitz, seconded by Ms. DeSilva. Any comments? Which terms on any others?
I was recognizing 17Y, distortion's bad.
Yes.
That's great.
There may be some, I saw that.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Zico.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Copland.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes. Any public questions or comments? Note, this section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Ms. Conoco, seconded by Ms. Zico.
For caution, across the board.
Sorry, I'm back. Hi, Anne Powell, 86, West Preston Avenue. I just wanted to bring to your attention, we do have lost several people here tonight that are concerned about the playgrounds. Not everybody feels comfortable to come up to talk, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We are up to over 500 signatures on the petition. I think I figured out how to send it to the two of you. Have you gotten anything?
We've not received it.
Okay, then I'll try to find a way to download it and email it. Also, I've been doing more research, and I'll send this in an email as well. So it looks like we're down to looking between woodchips and the poured-in-place rubberized surface, and there's a study from the California's Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment Department that found that 69% of rubberized playground surfaces fail to meet impact attenuation standards compared to 100% pass rate for surfaces made of woodchips. The issue is the rubber hardens over time, and it's tested before and it's installed, but I don't think we run impact attenuation tests, you know, every few years. I know we heard that the rubber was pretty sprangy, but just to say, there are studies that show the wood is better in preventing injuries when the children fall, which might seem a little counterintuitive. Also, that the certified playground mulch, it's also called engineered wood fiber, is fully ADA compliant, and I know that's a big concern. They offer several different options, with one, you could even combine it with a polymer that can make a walkway in certain areas if you need to get from one piece of equipment to another. And also, there was a, something called the KidSafe National Playground Conference in Sydney, Australia, and two professors from the Sydney University of Technology delivered a paper called Why Bounce Is Bad? And they had seen in Australia that since the rubberized material was brought into use over the course of 20 years, that the use of rubberized surfaces increased, the use of organic surfaces like woodchips decreased, but that injuries were increasing at a rate of 20%. So these professors said, why is that? Again, it's counterintuitive. And they did all these physics engineering drawings, which I'll be sending to all of you, and if, they found out that the bounce actually increased the injuries because you're falling down hard and then you're being sort of jerked back up. So all things to take into consideration. I think good points in favor of the woodchips, which I'm such a fan of, and I'll send that to you for your research. Also to clarify, who is actually doing the research on the material? Is it the new facilities director, or is it your team? Like who's drawing up pros and cons of woodchips versus poured-in-place?
That's a great question. I have a lot of information that I did since our first conversation in the beginning that I have shared with the facilities committee, and the research that I have, again, is both sides, right? So for every argument, right, we can have ones that are for and ones that are against, and I have married a both.
And I'll, I'm sure you look at sources, I've been very cautious in looking at my sources, and I try not to take anything that's from a manufacturer or an installer, I feel like they have a vested interest.
A bias.
Yeah. You know, the health organizations, the scientific organizations, I'm kind of would look to. So there isn't a committee, say, that's doing research.
Is there a playgrounds committee for research now?
It's you, and you'll present it to them.
I have already throughout the years, yes, and any additional information I have, I will send, as if you're going to share anything with me, I'll be more than happy to share that with the board so that they have both sides, because we're not going on a biased setup, we're going to go with what we have determined is best at the time.
And I also wanted to remind, when I had sent in 2017, the attachment that gave the breakdown of the costs for the mulch and the rubber, I noted in the email I sent that the facilities director had said that those numbers were not valid anymore, that was their preliminary write-up, and not, I know you have referred to it, just not to take it as fact. That was their preliminary estimate, and the numbers didn't, you know, the numbers that they thought it would be.
Changed.
Is not, yeah, is not what it ended up being.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just out of curiosity, about how many incidences are there of children falling off the playground equipment? Do we know?
We do. We do have reports in regard to that, but I have no idea how to answer that question with you now. There has not been an influx one way or the other regardless of surface, even though I know, you know, the municipality is talking about where there are more incidences. We haven't had an influx to a point where it's reached me, that I said, oh my gosh, we really need to do something because we have kids getting hurt on the daily.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Mr. Copland, seconded by Mr. Gallo. And may I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. DeSilva.
Motion seconded by Ms. Conoco.
Thank you very much, thank you all.